And some type of computer program for the kids.
One of my challenges, which is a good challenge, is that I get more and more kids. Every year I get about 50 more kids and we're busting out at the seams. We're happy to have J&amp;A, John Evans Andrews School, but we're almost using all of their classrooms. My summer camp is more enrollment there in the summertime than it is than what they have at their school in the school year. So I'm now thinking about where I'm gonna go.
The entire Tacoma Park community, the entire Montgomery County system, and even the state of Maryland need to see how this came together. They need to see and witness the impact that it's having in the lives of these children and in their families and in the community. And after witnessing that, I would challenge our community to step up and fund this at even greater levels. So that's the first thing I would say. Next year, I mean, the reason why we're not breaking 1,000 kids is the resources. We need money. I mean, the more money we have, the more kids we can have. So next year, we're gonna try to hit 350. That's my goal. But you know, if it all comes down to raising money.
I love how like it's learning at the same time, but it's actually like you're having fun as well. So it's not like you're learning all the time. You get to have fun, you know, go to the park. And they're letting us be volunteers where we get to teach the kids and help them.
We get to swim a lot because there are a lot of kids who don't know how to swim. This program helps them a lot by swimming.
It's a lot of good friends and caring staff. It's great people. They're very kind, very nice.
I just like that a lot of kids attended it. Like they think that's a really great camp because we have a lot of activities to do, like going swimming, doing arts and crafts, being able to be in the play.
I would love to take it citywide, but once again, it's we provide transportation for the kids too. So the program for the actual participants is free, right? But there are all these costs involved. Kids get free transportation from their homes to the location of the program. This year, it's at John Evans Andrews School on Elm Street in Tacoma Park. So that is a very expensive cost for the program. So yes, we would like to have other areas in the city participate, but we have to have the buses, the bus drivers to pick these kids up and bring them home.
I would love to see these kids venture out into programs that maybe employers, teachers, and everyone could have a mentoring program for these kids and start training them at an early stage in like what they want to be, what they want to do. Give them insight of what's happening around the world.
The most rewarding thing, a couple of things, that I know that the kids in Tacoma Park in Montgomery County have a safe place during the summer. A lot of kids can't afford summer camp. So that should not mean you shouldn't be able to participate in some type of program. Another aspect of it that is very important to me is the kids can do not experience what is called the summer slide. Academically, they can stay on level with their peers. And then finally, it's food. I mean, the wealthiest country in the world, the wealthiest county in the state of Maryland, it should, the kids should not go to bed hungry. And that's during the school year and the summer.
We have always worked with our community and we're a village. And I appreciate all the entities. I've had the police department, the fire department, the council, the mayor. They have all joined in to help make this project a success.
I just want to say thank the city of Tacoma Park, my colleagues in the council for supporting Lynch &amp; Learn for another year. I really appreciate it. The kids really appreciate it. And thank you Montgomery County Collaboration Council for working with us. It's a great program. Hope to continue it throughout the city and throughout the county.
I'd like to call this session, this meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council. Welcome. Tonight, we have a rare treat. We are doing a joint meeting with our state delegation. We have with us tonight Delegate Moon, who is here and was able to enjoy the reception with us. Our delegate Sheila Hickson is on her way, but as we all know, with the traffic and rain tonight, she was delayed, and our delegate Will Smith will be here as well. And unfortunately, our city council member, Mayor, got stuck on an airplane, but he hopes to make it this evening. So hopefully, we'll all be here soon. So I thought I'd just spend a few moments and welcome everyone, and thank you all again for coming and for our delegation for being here. This is the first time we are doing this, and we hope to make it an annual event. The reason we started to do this and had the thought to do this is because there's a lot going on in Tacoma Park. We have a lot of work that we're doing here, and we want to make sure that our state delegation knows about it. In addition, as many of you know, one of the things that we've been stressing over the past year, as this council has been in session, is really building partnerships. Building partnerships in our community, building partnerships with the county, and building partnerships in Annapolis. And so continuing with that theme, we wanted to invite our state delegation here tonight. We had begun planning this event before the national election, but since the national election, it makes tonight even more important. We have a lot we're doing here, and we're going to face, unfortunately, a lot more challenges over the next four years. And we are going to need strong advocates for our city in Annapolis. And just to kind of remind us all about our city, because sometimes I feel like the media portrays us as one kind of city, and I think it's important, particularly for, well, our one delegate who lives here knows this, but we will reiterate it and remind his colleagues of this. Tacoma Park is made up of half of our residents are renters here in our city. A third of the people who live in Tacoma Park were born outside of the United States. When we look at our public schools, our Piney Branch and our Tacoma Park Elementary School, over a third of the students who attend those schools receive free and reduced meals. And over a quarter at Tacoma Park Middle School receive free and reduced meals. We are a diverse community, and we are a community that has a lot of needs, and people who we need to make sure that we're meeting those needs. Unfortunately, as we look to these next four years, it's going to be rough. We already know that there have been threats, because we are a sanctuary city, that some of our federal dollars will be cut. We get 25% of our budget comes from the county and the state. So if taxes policies are changed and tax revenues go down, we're going to get hit, the county's going to get hit, and the state's going to get hit, and that's going to hurt us more. If federal employers are cut, a lot of the residents who live in Tacoma Park are federal employees, and that's going to hurt us as well. So not to, you know, have a very dour picture of the next four years, but to say that we are really going to need to roll up our sleeves and work hard. We've created packets for our delegates, and I know all the residents here know the priorities we've been working on for the last four years. Affordable housing, community engagement, economic development, environmental sustainability, and fiscal responsibility are all our key priorities. And this is perfect timing, because now we have Delegate Hickson joining us. Welcome.
Thank you. Sorry, everyone.
We just got started.
Oh, good.
Perfect timing.
Okay.
You didn't need to hear me speak. All right, so with that welcome, in a few moments, I'm going to turn it over to Council Member Smith, who will go through more specifically our legislative priorities in Annapolis. But before we do that, we wanted to open it up for public comments. We did ask people to sign up ahead of time for public comments, so I will call your name. I asked that, as we normally do for public comments, you come to the podium, tell us where you live, and you have three minutes for your comments. So the first person who signed up is Janelle Wilkins.
Thank you. All right, I'm first to go.
Yep.
Hi, good night, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Janelle Wilkins. I actually live in Silver Spring, and I represent the Greater Silver Spring area in Tacoma Park on the Montgomery County Democratic Central Committee. In the aftermath of the presidential election, our president-elect Trump has doubled down on his immigration policy promises, and the nation is anticipating a wave of anti-immigrant enforcement with millions of deportations. Hundreds of us have rallied together in support and solidarity, and we also need legislative protections. Our community is a welcoming community with a high immigrant population, and I would like to urge District 20 delegation to champion legislation that will fight against the prejudiced policies that the Trump administration has promised. A centerpiece legislation should be the Maryland Trust Act, which is expected to be reintroduced in the 2017 session. Although it is heartening that Montgomery County, Tacoma Park in particular, and Baltimore County have vowed to not adhere to detainer requests from Immigration and Customs Enforcement, it's important that all of Maryland opts out. The Maryland Trust Act provides that when an individual is eligible for release from state custody, local authorities will not continue to detain and hand undocumented immigrants over to federal immigration enforcement. The fact that most individuals held on an immigration detainer in Maryland are charged only with traffic violations or minor misdemeanor offenses, and overwhelmingly, majority of people who are detained in Maryland are Latinos, really is a fact that should be of concern to all of us. Immigration detainers undermine public safety and community trust in local law enforcement by entangling authorities, local authorities and federal immigration enforcement efforts. I would like to urge a robust, proactive, pro-immigrant, pro-inclusion agenda in the 2017 session with the Trust Act as a key piece of legislation. Thank you so much for all you do to represent us, and I'm looking forward to working with you on this.
Thank you. Great. Next is Julie Tadio.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Ward 2 and co-founder of SafeGrow Montgomery. I'm here tonight to make you aware of an assault on our right as a municipality to pass legislation that protects human, animal, and environmental health. The pesticide lobbying group Rise has filed a lawsuit against the county's newly passed Healthy Lawns Act, a law which had overwhelming support countywide, just as our SafeGrow Act of 2013 had overwhelming citywide support. Our state lawmakers who are here tonight already know from experience that the pesticide industry and its lobbyists repeatedly threaten preemption at the state level. Maryland is now just one of seven states left that has not lost its right to pass legislation that is more protective than what the federal government allows. Just last spring, during deliberations for the Pollinator Protection Act, a preemption amendment was quietly slipped into that bill by none other than a Democratic lawmaker at the behest of the Farm Bureau. But thanks in part to some of you here, our great District 20 reps, we managed to defeat that amendment in a clean law passed. But we have to stay vigilant. This was not the first, and it will not be the last attempt to preempt Maryland. With the new administration, it has been made clear that the EPA will be further neutered. Those who are being put in charge of it posit that pesticides pose no risk at all to human health, a claim that the EPA has never made in the past. Threats to roll back the Clean Air and Clean Water Acts mean that at the state level, you will indeed be challenged to do more to protect our bay and the very air that our kids breathe. And pesticides from lawns threaten the quality of both. Finally, to my city council members and mayor, I ask you to defend our city's right to protect ourselves from outside interference and bullying tactics of the pesticide industry over our right to legislate. The city and county council attorneys vetted these laws already on the issue of preemption. Tacoma Park's SafeGrow Act is historic, a model for other communities, for our county, and in line with our city's mission to be a sustainable community. I request that you file a friend of the court brief because of what is at stake for our city and county. We must defend our right to enable local action, be it on pesticides, plastic bags, polystyrene, tobacco, where state and federal laws fall short. The very thought of moving backwards on this issue is simply not in line with Tacoma Park's record of commitment to the environment and to the health of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Laura Charkoudian.
Good evening. Delegate Moon and Delegate Hickson, thank you so much for coming. So I'm a Ward 2 resident, and I wanted to talk about two of the bills that I'm working on this session that I think have connections to Tacoma Park that I wanted to highlight. The first is the Maryland Farms and Family Act that will spread what we started here in Tacoma Park with Crossroads Farmer's Market, where we double the value of SNAP and WIC when they're spent at the market. When we started it, it was a renegade radical idea that we were told was illegal, and USDA tried to shut it down. It's now a national model, and we're trying to expand that with a piece of legislation to get that really spread all throughout the state to incentivize more opportunities for people to spend their federal nutrition benefits at markets. It has public health implications, and it also has implications for supporting family farms. The second bill that I want to talk about is assisted outpatient treatment. So I personally have had experiences here in Tacoma Park with the Tacoma Park Police Department and a family member who has had mental health challenges, and I know many other people have as well. I know it's an issue that the Tacoma Park Police deal with on a regular basis, and one of the challenges that they have is that even when they are able to recognize that someone needs treatment rather than incarceration, the options are really limited. And so many of us have had family members who have cycled in and out of jail when treatment is what they needed. And so this assisted outpatient treatment bill is actually called Mental Health Treatment Over Incarceration is the name of the bill. It doesn't have a number yet. Delegate Eric Barron is going to be introducing it, and I'm hoping that recognizing and that the council will speak to the police about the possibility of supporting it and that the District 20 delegation will also support it. And since I have a minute left, I'll just keep going. The other bill that I'm working on is one that's related to restorative practices in schools. And so I think that this is an issue that is really across the board in Tacoma Park. We recognize that a lot of times, the way that discipline occurs in the schools is the beginning of the school-to-prison pipeline, and so there will be legislation that has not yet been drafted that will support restorative practices in schools instead of exclusionary discipline. Community Mediation Maryland, which is based here in Tacoma Park and works all over the state, is one of the leading organizations on supporting community mediation to work in partnership with local school systems to really incorporate restorative practices as part of the disciplinary procedure. And I'm happy to talk with anyone who might be interested about more details of any of those. Thanks.
Thank you. Perfect. Next is Marty Itner.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marty Itner, and I live on Flower Avenue in Ward 5 in Tacoma Park. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the City's Committee on the Environment, of which I'm a new member. We would like the council and District 20 delegation to discuss, among other issues, upcoming state environmental and energy legislation. We seek District 20 input on which efforts are most important for the city to comment on. We hope the council can take an active role in this year in commenting on major environmental, energy efficiencies, and renewables legislation. Given the upcoming national political picture, it is very important to pay attention to state issues. We feel that Tacoma Park can demonstrate leadership on environmental sustainability. Our committee is happy to help by reviewing proposals and making recommendations. In short, don't forget about the environment. Thank you.
Next is Laura Barclay.
Good evening. Delegate Hickson and Delegate Moon. I'm Laura Barclay. I'm with the Old Tacoma Business Association, and we're the nonprofit supported by the City of Tacoma Park and the District of Columbia, and we're responsible for working for the small businesses in our combined commercial district. Our organization works on issues important to small businesses like parking, personal property taxes, and availability of capital, and we run promotions, events, and other marketing programs to draw visitors to our community. We're proud of our unique commercial district, which is filled primarily with locally-owned independent businesses, and are happy to report that we have several new businesses about to open and very low commercial availability right now. I'd like to use this opportunity to thank you. Last week, we were notified that we received $75,000 grant for a community legacy award from the State of Maryland for our revolving loan fund to expand our existing revolving loan fund, which is used to make loans to stimulate economic development in new and existing businesses in our community. Our revolving loan fund actually started in 2009 with 100 and
Is Janelle Wilkins.
All right, I'm first to go.
Yep.
Hi, good night, everyone.
Evening.
Good evening. I'm Janelle Wilkins. I actually live in Silver Spring and I represent the Greater Silver Spring area in Tacoma Park on the Montgomery County Democratic Central Committee. In the aftermath of the presidential election, our President-elect Trump has doubled down on his immigration policy promises and the nation is anticipating a wave of anti-immigrant enforcement with millions of deportations. Hundreds of us have rallied together in support and solidarity, and we also need legislative protections. Our community is a welcoming community with a high immigrant population, and I would like to urge the District 20 delegation to champion legislation that will fight against the prejudiced policies that the Trump administration has promised. A centerpiece legislation should be the Maryland Trust Act, which is expected to be reintroduced in the 2017 session. Although it is heartening that Montgomery County, Tacoma Park in particular, and Baltimore County have vowed to not adhere to detainer requests from Immigration and Customs Enforcement, it's important that all of Maryland opts out. The Maryland Trust Act provides that when an individual is eligible for release from state custody, local authorities will not continue to detain and hand undocumented immigrants over to federal immigration enforcement. The fact that most individuals held on an immigration detainer in Maryland are charged only with traffic violations or minor misdemeanor offenses, and overwhelmingly, majority of people who are detained in Maryland are Latinos, really is a fact that should be of concern to all of us. Immigration detainers undermine public safety and community trust in local law enforcement by entangling authorities, local authorities, and federal immigration enforcement efforts. I would like to urge a robust, proactive, pro-immigrant, pro-inclusion agenda in the 2017 session with the Trust Act as a key piece of legislation. Thank you so much for all you do to represent us, and I'm looking forward to working with you on this.
Thank you. Great. Next is Julie Tadio.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Ward Two and co-founder of Safe Grow Montgomery. I'm here tonight to make you aware of an assault on our right as a municipality to pass legislation that protects human, animal, and environmental health. The pesticide lobbying group Rise has filed a lawsuit against the county's newly passed Healthy Lawns Act, a law which had overwhelming support countywide, just as our Safe Grow Act of 2013 had overwhelming citywide support. Our state lawmakers who are here tonight already know from experience that the pesticide industry and its lobbyists repeatedly threatened preemption at the state level. Maryland is now just one of seven states left that has not lost its right to pass legislation that is more protective than what the federal government allows. Just last spring, during deliberations for the Pollinator Protection Act, a preemption amendment was quietly slipped into that bill by none other than a Democratic lawmaker at the behest of the Farm Bureau. But thanks in part to some of you here, our great District 20 reps, we managed to defeat that amendment and a clean law passed. But we have to stay vigilant. This was not the first, and it will not be the last attempt to preempt Maryland. With the new administration, it has been made clear that the EPA will be further neutered. Those who are being put in charge of it posit that pesticides pose no risk at all to human health, a claim that the EPA has never made in the past. Threats to roll back the Clean Air and Clean Water Acts mean that at the state level, you will indeed be challenged to do more to protect our bay and the very air that our kids breathe, and pesticides from lawns threaten the quality of both. Finally, to my City Council members and mayor, I ask you to defend our city's right to protect ourselves from outside interference and bullying tactics of the pesticide industry over our right to legislate. The city and county council attorneys vetted these laws already on the issue of preemption. Tacoma Park's Safe Grow Act is historic, a model for other communities, for our county, and in line with our city's mission to be a sustainable community. I request that you file a friend of the court brief because of what is at stake for our city and county. We must defend our right to enable local action, be it on pesticides, plastic bags, polystyrene, tobacco, where state and federal laws fall short. The very thought of moving backwards on this issue is simply not in line with Tacoma Park's record of commitment to the environment and to the health of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lorik Charcutian.
Good evening, Delegate Moon and Delegate Hickson. Thank you so much for coming. So I'm a Ward Two resident, and I wanted to talk about two of the bills that I'm working on this session that I think have connections to Tacoma Park that I wanted to highlight. The first is the Maryland Family, sorry, Farms and Family Act that will spread what we started here in Tacoma Park with Crossroads Farmer's Market where we double the value of SNAP and WIC when they're spent at the market. When we started it, it was a renegade radical idea that we were told was illegal, and USDA tried to shut it down. It's now a national model. And we're trying to expand that with a piece of legislation to get that really spread all throughout the state to incentivize more opportunities for people to spend their federal nutrition benefits at markets. It has public health implications, and it also has implications for supporting family farms. The second bill that I want to talk about is assisted outpatient treatment. So I personally have had experiences here in this, in Tacoma Park with the Tacoma Park Police Department and a family member who has had mental health challenges, and I know many other people have as well. I know it's an issue that the Tacoma Park Police deal with on a regular basis. And one of the challenges that they have is that even when they are able to recognize that someone needs treatment rather than incarceration, the options are really limited. And so many of us have had family members who have cycled in and out of jail when treatment is what they needed. And so this assisted outpatient treatment bill is actually called Mental Health Treatment Over Incarceration is the name of the bill. It doesn't have a number yet. Delegate Eric Barron is going to be introducing it, and I'm hoping that recognizing and that the council will speak to the police about the possibility of supporting it and that the District 20 delegation will also support it. And since I have a minute left, I'll just keep going. The other bill that I'm working on is one that's related to restorative practices in schools. And so I think that this is an issue that is really across the board. And in Tacoma Park, we recognize that a lot of times, the way that discipline occurs in the schools is the beginning of the school-to-prison pipeline. And so there will be legislation that has not yet been drafted that'll support restorative practices in schools instead of exclusionary discipline. Community Mediation Maryland, which is based here in Tacoma Park and works all over the state, is one of the leading organizations on supporting community mediation to work in partnership with local school systems to really incorporate restorative practices as part of the disciplinary procedure. And I'm happy to talk with anyone who might be interested about more details of any of those. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Marty Itner.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marty Itner, and I live on Flower Avenue in Ward Five in Tacoma Park. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the City's Committee on the Environment, of which I'm a new member. We would like the council and District 20 delegation to discuss, among other issues, upcoming state environmental and energy legislation. We seek District 20 input on which efforts are most important for the city to comment on. We hope the council can take an active role in this year in commenting on major environmental, energy efficiencies, and renewables legislation. Given the upcoming national political picture, it is very important to pay attention to state issues. We feel that Tacoma Park can demonstrate leadership on environmental sustainability. Our committee is happy to help by reviewing proposals and making recommendations. In short, don't forget about the environment. Thank you.
Next is Laura Barclay.
Good evening, Delegate Hickson and Delegate Moon. I'm Laura Barclay. I'm with the Old Tacoma Business Association, and we're the nonprofit supported by the City of Tacoma Park and the District of Columbia, and we're responsible for working for the small businesses in our combined commercial district. Our organization works on issues important to small businesses like parking, personal property taxes, and availability of capital, and we run promotions, events, and other marketing programs to draw visitors to our community. Our business, we're proud of our unique commercial district, which is filled primarily with locally-owned independent businesses, and are happy to report that we have several new businesses about to open and very low commercial availability right now. I'd like to use this opportunity to thank you. Last week, we were notified that we received $75,000 grant for a Community Legacy Award from the State of Maryland for our revolving loan fund to expand our existing revolving loan fund, which is used to make loans to stimulate economic development in new and existing businesses in our community. Our revolving loan fund actually started in 2009 with a $125,000 grant from the State of Maryland, and since then, we've used it to make 15 low-interest loans totaling over $400,000 as we recirculate the money as it's returned to us. This additional grant money that we're going to receive now will allow us to expand the program and make money available, make additional loans to our small businesses. I'd also like to use this chance to mention another loan program that we have in our community called Tacoma Notes, which is created with the help of volunteer support like active community members like Lorik Charcutian. Tacoma Notes is a community-funded loan program where we make loans to small businesses using money that we raise from members of the community. Local investors are offered the opportunity to invest in local businesses and watch their money in action in our community. We think it provides a great opportunity for local investors to work toward their long-term financial goals while supporting the small businesses in the community. We have one Tacoma Notes loan out now, and we hope to expand the program further in 2017. It's with these programs we are able to work toward addressing the unique needs of our small businesses. We ask for your continued support of programs like these, including the Main Street Maryland Program, of which we are part, as well as continued attention to other initiatives that encourage small business economic development. Thank you.
Next is Tim Ron.
Good evening, Mayor Stewart, council members, and district delegates. My name is Tim Ron, and I'm a resident of Ward One. I'm also the president, the current president of the Friends of Tacoma Park Maryland Library, also known as the Friends of the Library, or just simply the Friends. I'm here to speak about the library renovation, but first a few words about the Friends. We are a small group that funds support, to support everything from spanning circle time to the purchase of button makers and from summer quests to buying books used for the upcoming Mock Call to Call Awards. In short, we help the library by providing resources for its programs. They take it from there. We also support Spring for Poetry and Little Free Libraries. While these programs are not tied specifically to library programming, they would likely not exist without the Friends, and the Friends would not exist without the library. On my way here tonight, I walked through the library, and this is what I saw. I saw a speaker referring for a book discussion, a discussion that was taking place in the children's room because the library does not have a meeting room. I saw residents using the library spaces and resources to study, but I also saw the small cramped offices used by staff. I saw patients interacting with helpful staff, but behind them, I saw the doors of antiquated restrooms. I also, I saw what was good about the library and what makes it a great resource for our diverse community, but I also saw how much the building is out of date and needs to be more viable for the 21st century. About a year ago, the council committed funds for preliminary designs for the library, and in July, it approved money for detailed renovation plans. Both were great steps forward in realizing a new library space. We are now at the moment when we need to make the next step to decide if we're going to renovate, and if so, how we will pay for it. I believe that this is a topic on your agenda tonight. I would urge the council to commit, to continue to move forward with the renovation and would encourage the 20th District delegation to help the city with some of the funding needed for this project. I will quote Councilman Kovar, as I did in July, by saying, "We need," quote, "to ensure it, the library, can be a vital 21st century institution." Ladies and gentlemen, let's make it happen. Thank you.
And is Mr. Paris here, David Paris? All right, if he comes back in, we'll have him this week. So the next on the list is Mr. Joe Edgell.
Madam Mayor, council members, and Honorable District 20 delegates, thank you so much for coming, particularly on a night like tonight. I know it's kind of hard to get here and appreciate the extra effort to do that. My name is Joe Edgell. I chair the Safe Roadways Committee. The Safe Roadways Committee is a citizen advisory committee appointed by the City Council to provide advice on roadway issues for people who walk, bike, take transit, and drive. Our official mission from the City Council directs us to find ways to get people out of their cars and into other modes of transportation. And that's why I'm here tonight. We're having a hard time doing that, and we need your help. There are two items which have sometimes been neglected in favor of sexier policy issues in the legislature that we'd like you to focus on for the upcoming legislative session. First, we want you to improve the pedestrian and bicycle laws in Maryland so they're favorable to people who walk and bike. Second, is to use your oversight and legislative authority to put pressure on the state highways administration to treat people who walk and bike as equal to car drivers. I've lived in Maryland for a total of about 14 years. Maryland, and particularly District 20, thinks of itself frequently in progressive terms. But for those of us who originally come from other states that are pretty favorable to walkers and bicyclists, we think we have a long way to go here in Maryland on these issues. For example, did you know that in Maryland, under Maryland law, a car does not have to stop for you unless you are in the crosswalk? That same law prevents you from stepping into that crosswalk in front of a car if there are cars there. So if you think about this, you can't stand on the curb and force the cars to stop, or in the handicap ramp to force the cars to stop, but in the crosswalk. So if you're on a busy street like Ethan Allen, or Carroll, or Philadelphia Avenue that are state highways and traverse Tacoma Park, you have no way of getting across the street because you're not in the crosswalk. And it's illegal for you to step into that crosswalk because there are cars there. A few small tweaks to our state laws would eliminate this problem, and we think it's pretty important. Second, as I mentioned, is applying oversight pressure to SHA. Please allow me a quick example. Ethan Allen Avenue in Tacoma Park is a state highway and a 25 mile-per-hour residential street. Yet SHA refuses to make any substantial pedestrian or bike improvements. They refuse charros, those little in-lane symbols, and they refuse any modern traffic technology that would slow cars to allow pedestrians to cross. Tacoma Park's state highways are the most direct routes, are the most convenient routes for everyone, including people who walk and bike. We need your assistance in bringing balance to Maryland's highway laws. Every state road should accommodate safely bicyclists and pedestrians. We need your assistance in changing these mundane laws. They're not sexy, but they are extremely important, and I'll provide a copy of my comments for the people who are absent tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Edgell. Next is Farrell Hammer.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Welcome Delegate Hickson and Delegate Moon. My name is Farrell Hammer, and I live in Ward One. I'm here to talk a little bit about the library. As you've already heard tonight, it's quite out of date and quite small. And as you've also heard tonight from the mayor and others, this is a very, very, very diverse community, and it's a unique community. The library is one of those places where the whole community comes together. It is used by everybody, and it's what you call in planning a third place. It's not your house. It's not your office. It's where you come together as a community, and the library in particularly, to communicate through language. It's the one third place where people can come where they don't have to buy something to gain entry. So it's an important place for our community. Montgomery County is 500 square miles. Tacoma Park is two square miles. The library is a key component of our unique community identity, and so please help us maintain that identity by supporting the expansion. Bonding, a bond for the library is a fiscally responsible way to get it done. Please help us. Thank you.
And then next is Mr. Bruce Baker.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Baker. I live at 7724 Maple, and I'm also the Executive Director of CHEER, which stands for Community Health and Empowerment through Education and Research. In 2012, CHEER completed a community strategic plan for Tacoma Park and Long Branch. In doing so, we conducted small group visioning and goal-setting sessions for the Tacoma Park and Long Branch community on housing, health, the local economy, and later on, youth development. Each of these groups was representative of the racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic diversity of the community. Since then, CHEER has worked to implement this plan. In doing so, we have worked closely with immigrants, tenants, and other underrepresented groups to update and learn more about barriers and challenges to community goals. I have submitted a copy of the updated goals for 2016 for your information and use, and have copies available for anybody who might want them. But I want to highlight two of the high-priority goals from that list. First, one of the highest priority goals is to make housing equally available to people of all incomes. Because of the very high cost of living in this area, affordable homeownership opportunities are extremely limited. The city does not have the resources to address this in a substantial way. I urge you to consider ways to create homeownership opportunities for single-family homes and also multifamily buildings by supporting cooperatives or other forms of shared ownership. Affordable rents are also a concern. Many Long Branch and some Tacoma Park renters are subject to large rent increases that outstrip increases in income. Renter protections are needed everywhere to limit the threat of eviction and displacement, which destabilizes neighborhoods. We have also found that there are some Tacoma Park and Long Branch landlords that neglect maintenance, create dangerous living conditions, and intimidate renters who complain or seek to organize. Tenants are at a great disadvantage with these landlords. I urge you to expand tenant rights through such laws as the Just Cause Evictions Law, which has been enacted in many cities, states and cities, but not in Maryland. A second high priority goal that I want to highlight is improving health and expanding healthcare access. The Affordable Care Act has expanded opportunities for healthcare coverage, and CHEER has worked hard to help community members take advantage of this. These gains are now under threat, and I urge you to take actions that will protect those who are covered and find ways to expand coverage to more people. For example, Montgomery County has two good programs, Montgomery Cares and Care for Kids, that might, these might be a good model for statewide expansion of healthcare. And I would be happy to discuss any of these issues with, in any more detail. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Gresham-Lo.
Hello, Representative Hickson, Representative Moon, and Mayor Stewart. I'm too short. Okay. I'm Gresham-Lo. I live on Sycamore Avenue in Ward Three, and I'm the chairman of the Tree Commission. And I would like to read a statement really referencing to a lot of the pruning of PEPCO. "We urge our state and local representatives to explore options for better balancing the protection of District 20's urban tree canopy, which provides so many public health, environmental, and economic benefits, with the public interest in PEPCO's uninterrupted transmission of electricity. Over the past year, many members of the district have expressed serious and widespread concerns over the severity of the pruning and removal of apparently healthy trees that do not conflict with power lines, as well as generally inadequate notification from PEPCO on vegetation control. We also encourage our elected representative to explore new ways to provide positive incentives for better maintenance of existing canopy trees on both private and public property and for planting native canopy species. The Tree Commission would be willing to contribute to such discussions and planning in any way that would be helpful. Thank you."
And I'd take this moment to welcome Delegate Smith. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thanks. Apologies for being late.
Yep. Perfect. And next is Mr. Wayne Sherwood.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Sherwood. I'm from Ward One, and thank you very much to Delegate Hickson and Delegate Moon and Delegate Smith for coming here tonight. It's a real pleasure to meet you. I think you're going to have a horrible job ahead of you in the year ahead. I've worked in affordable housing my whole career. I've also recently been invited to join the Board of Montgomery Housing Partnerships. I have yet to go to my first meeting, but I know that they're panicked. I've been looking at what's going on at the national state, and you know, in order to get some of the things that President-elect Trump wants, you would have to have a 25% cut in the domestic discretionary budget in the first year. And that's going to filter down to the state of Maryland right away, early next year. And it's going to affect a lot of things that affect Tacoma Park, low-income housing and low-income families in a lot of ways, big cuts in the Affordable Care Act if they want to get rid of that, big cuts in education programs, Title I programs, affordable housing programs, to say nothing of things like CWBG programs and urban mass transit programs, which could affect the Purple Line. So I mean, I'm not here to ask you to increase funding for a lot of programs. I don't see that that's going to be possible in the next. I'm just asking you that as you face all these proposed cuts, please keep in mind, especially low-income families, low-income children, and do your best you can to make cuts in other areas. Two, and I know it's not going to be popular for anybody, two areas in particular, in affordable housing. The low-income housing tax credit may become less popular if the tax reform goes through and the rates go down. So there may be a need for more gap funding for affordable housing for the state's rental assistance program. If you could increase funding slightly for the Rental Housing Works Program, gap funding for the affordable housing deals that use tax-exempt bonds to go up to $25 million instead of $8 million, and also to see if it'd come out of the capital budget or not from the operating budget. And then the whole area of youth opportunities, do whatever you can, and I don't have bill numbers and things, for low-income youth and youth opportunities because these are the people that have the least voice. They're most likely to suffer cuts. And so for community centers and community programs and educational outreach to help people from not having to drop out of school, and for a place like the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue where you could use more programs to reach out to the low-income and minority communities in that area, greatly appreciate your help and support. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Mr. Charles Thomas.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the state delegation as well as the city council. My name is Chuck Thomas. I live in Ward Two. I'm a renter, and I've spoken to this body before about the Just Cause eviction. And I know that there's still, I'm still not very clear about how that all plays out with the state, the county, and the local government. But I just want to stress that however it can be worked out to either have Just Cause eviction statewide or for the local government here to somehow get it through the county, if the county is where the exceptions for localities take place. I think it's very important because it's really about quality of life, that tenants are afraid to advocate to improve the circumstances in their rental units for fear of being evicted in retribution as opposed to, you know, and right now, they wouldn't even have to give a reason. If you have Just Cause eviction, then people can't be evicted just for trying to organize to improve their quality of life. Just to give an example, I knew tenants in an apartment complex that refused to put the kind of pressure that they needed to on their landlord to effectively eradicate bedbugs from the building because they were afraid that in doing so, they would all just not have their month-to-month leases renewed anymore. So they had to live with bedbugs coming back through the walls rather than being fully eradicated. After I spoke about that one time before, a member of this council told me afterwards about a woman that he knew who was evicted because of some advocacy. I don't want to say who, but maybe when you guys are talking amongst yourselves at some point, you can share that story too. I also wanted to say that as far as the Medicaid expansion goes, if the Congress and the president succeed in making cuts or changes to Medicaid expansion, I want to urge the Maryland state government to find a way to continue to pay for that. Specifically, a lot of people say, "Well, able-bodied adults, maybe we can cut them out of the program." I'm an able-bodied adult. I work full-time as a teacher's aide in a DC public school, teaching disadvantaged kids how to read. I'm also a single parent. I take care of these girls whenever I'm not at work. My daughters grace and joy. And I benefit from the Medicaid expansion because even if I could afford to put the money together to pay for premiums for an insurance plan, I have a pre-existing, precancerous condition. The Medicaid expansion- The Medicaid expansion covers the costs of, of that. If I had to pay out-of-pocket up to the deductible, then I wouldn't be able to pay my food or my rent. So, just if people are talking about cutting out able-bodied adults or whatever, just wanted you to keep in mind, I'm an able-bodied adult who doesn't want to die of cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. We had a couple of folks who signed up, but we weren't able to get them on the printed-out list. We have three more. So, if, Ms. Mary Jane Machui, if you'd like to speak.
Hi, I'm Mary Jane Machui, Ward Two, parents of special needs adults. Thank you, everybody, for coming here. Thank you, everybody, on this side, coming here. I just want to say that we're trying to help the people with developmental and/or severe chronic psychiatric disabilities in the fields of housing, safety, jobs, and recreation. A little statistics here, one in 68 people in the United States is estimated to have some form of autism. And Tacoma Park, the census in 2010 was six, estimated to be 16,715. And since estimated, half of these were children, and we're trying to help adults mainly, I, that means approximately 122 people with autism in Tacoma Park that need help. And people have told me, "Well, there aren't enough people, you're only a few of you." But there's such a thing as consensus, and there's such a thing as compassion, and numbers aren't always, we need help more than anybody. When your brain is affected, you need help. My only brother committed suicide when he was 25. So, I, I, I feel for, for people, and I, I have bipolar, which runs in my family. So, please, please, please take us in consideration. We may not be in the thousands, but we sure need, need your all's help. And, and we can give back too. We can give a lot back. We're not like, complete, you know, vegetables. And also, I've, I've spoken to Mr. Huck, who isn't here today, and Mr. Smith has, has listened, come to our meetings, and the mayor's come to her meeting, and I don't see Suzanne Ludlow. She has come to her meeting, and Captain Collington too. And thank you all for coming to our meetings and listening to us. And we're trying to get it, things worked out with the Montgomery County Recreation Department, so that we can have a free class for people with disabilities here in Tacoma Park. One is under the auspices of the city, because we pay Montgomery County taxes and the city taxes, so we should get a class here. I really think so, because they keep pointing fingers at each other, the city and the, and the county, "Oh, we, but they're, they're, why don't they do it?" And they want, they do it, you know? Come on, guys, just agreed it, whatever. So, anyways, I just wanted to thank you all for this. My son is not going to directly be helped by this so much, because he needs a job badly, where a lot of people in his situation, if they get jobs or put in a lousy job like his, he doesn't know until the day before whether he has to work the next day. When you have autism and depression, that's a hell of a thing to deal with, when you know, you know, the day before, where you go to work in the day. So, a lot of people are in that situation with disabilities. And thank you.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Jen Waferd.
Thank you so much. It is such an honor to be in Tacoma Park and to know that we have such powerful, passionate advocates on city council and the mayor and our wonderful delegates. It's so good to know that you guys are there. And also wanted to give a shout-out to some of Jamie Raskin's staff who are here. We're very, very lucky to have you all here. And I was absolutely ecstatic to hear Mr. Wayne Sherwood's testimony and, and comments. I want to echo the exact same sentiment. So, we're very, very grateful for the support that you guys have given for a lot of the projects that I've been lucky to have been a part of. And the new thing that we're really working on is mobilizing as a community on a range of issues. And we had a very successful first big meeting. So, the issues that you'll be hearing about, but I, I know we'll be working collaboratively with you, because I believe that your, your hearts and minds are aligned with where the people of Tacoma Park are, which are strong defense of our undocumented immigrant neighbors, which would include instructing the police on non-cooperation with ICE and, and everything we need to do to be a strong sanctuary protection, even if that has risks, which we know it does, budgetary implications as well. But really, the importance of protecting, especially the, the children who are here, delayed arrival, child, child arrival, delayed action, we want to do everything we can, and we really look forward to you guys helping us do everything we can. And then, all the work that Mr. Sherwood and, and other good people mentioned, of how important it is to fight hardest to protect the programs that support people who have the least among us. So, programs that benefit the poor, housing programs, anti-poverty programs, education, early childhood education is one of the best ways to reduce long-term poverty, is to invest in the children zero to three. So, everything we can do to make sure that we are protecting the programs and enhancing what we can for the people who will be most risk in the coming years, and I know you all agree with that, I'm just saying that I appreciate everything we will be doing together in the future, and I'm grateful that we are here together tonight, and grateful that you all are representing us. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we will let Ms. Denise Jones have the last word this evening for the public comment.
Good evening, everybody. I am a longtime resident of Tacoma Park, 21-plus years now. I raised my daughter here in Tacoma Park. I'm, I'm here tonight representing tenants. I live in Essex House Apartments down the street on Maple Avenue. I started the Tenants Association there, because we have had many years of difficulty in dealing with our, our landlord, and went through a major renovation in the building, and things got worse. And my interest in attending this meeting tonight is to piggyback off of one of the issues around which, that Bruce Baker spoke of, affordable housing, your attention to affordable housing. It's incredibly important. Many of my neighbors have moved throughout the years, because they could no longer afford the rents. We know there are other working professionals who cannot afford to live here in Montgomery County or live far away from their jobs in Montgomery County. We're hoping that there are efforts to support homeownership, so that families aren't displaced, and working parents can provide stable housing for their children in Montgomery County and Tacoma Park in particular. This is keenly, a keenly important issue, and if you feel, if, especially if you feel that our diversity is our strength. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for everyone who provided public comments this evening. Now, on our agenda, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Councilmember Smith, who is going to run through the council's legislative priorities for our delegation. You have those in front of you, a handout, so you can follow along. And in the packet we gave you, there's some background material regarding each of these. So, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say, a couple of weeks ago, I was in Washington County as the vice-chair of the Maryland Municipal League Legislative Committee. I was presenting the league's legislative priorities, and Washington County is very different from Tacoma Park, and it is good to be in Tacoma Park. All right. The first thing, you heard some testimony about this, is a bond bill for library renovation. The city is in the design phase for expansion and renovation of our library, and we would like to have bond funds for construction, and we would like this to start the upcoming session. The next priority for us is legislation to address issues related to state highway administration and utility work in the public right of way. This is an issue not just for Tacoma Park, but many municipalities in Maryland. PEPCO, WSSC, it, it has become more and more difficult to work with them, to try to get some understanding of when their schedule is for construction. And when it comes to PEPCO, they seem to have this extremely aggressive initiative to trim trees. So, a lot of residents are very upset that our tree canopy is being damaged, so we would like some type of legislation, so that we could have more of a collaborative relationship with the state highway administration and the utilities. You guys are going to see this priority again through the Maryland Municipal League, because we also adopted this. So, it just goes to show how important this is for us. On economic development, the city is really trying to make a big push for economic development on the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. As many of you already know, there's going to be a Purple Line stop at University of New Hampshire Avenue. Yes, we all know that there is a lawsuit in place, but we are very hopeful that that will be resolved. But we, you know the process, we know the process. This county has to make a request to the state for funding to be placed in their capital improvement plan. So, what we're asking is for you to make this a priority, and for you also to reach out to the county council president and the county executive, and let them know that this is a very important priority for the city of Tacoma Park. We're not asking for it to be in one-year CLP, but it can be spread out in a number of years. But for transportation projects in Montgomery County, it takes a very long time for them to get funded. So, we need to start now the process of getting everybody on board, so that we can have the future of New Hampshire Avenue that the city envisions. We can start doing that now. Washington Aventis Hospital campus. As you know, they receive their certificate of need. The hospital is currently building their new facility. So, there are a couple of things that are very important to the city and the residents. One, we would like to see a freestanding medical facility on the campus. Two, we want an aquatic center on the campus, and three, other complimentary uses. The freestanding medical facility is, you know, working through its process through the Maryland Healthcare Commission for regulations on that. We really need you guys to stay on top of it, to make sure that these regulations are advantageous, or even carve out for the city of Tacoma Park, that we can get a freestanding emergency room as quick as possible, so that we don't have to go through the same certificate of need process that might take years before we can have a freestanding emergency room. Washington Aventis Medical Hospital will have to make that application, because, you know, it has to be a hospital to do it, but the residents of Tacoma Park want this to happen, and so we would like you guys to make it a priority for the upcoming session. The aquatic center has been an idea that the hospital, the university, Washington Aventis University, Montgomery College, and the city have all come together and decided that we think that this would be a great future use on the campus. We're working with the county now through their recreation department, so that the county would possibly manage the facility. But we are going to need some support from the delegation to move this idea forward. And that would include a letter of support to the county, and also possibly some funding from the state to help with the initial design of the future aquatic center. And then, other uses, we haven't figured those out, but when session starts, you guys are going to hear about possibly money for economic development. We just want to make sure that we know about these potential buckets of money and how we could apply them to Washington Aventis Hospital. This is potentially a very big one. Evaluate the state collection and distribution of business personal property tax. Last year, we had, some could say, a hiccup with taxes through the comptroller's office. But we have noticed that there are issues in reporting, and the biggest issue, it's, it's self-reporting. Businesses, you know, the, the state doesn't actually send somebody out to see, you know, if you're actually filing these taxes, you know? So, we have had issues where businesses that aren't in Tacoma Park are paying, and we do not believe some businesses that are in Tacoma Park are paying their fair share. So, I think it would be very helpful if we could have a analysis of the program. One, two, Montgomery County Chapter of MML, this is also a priority. And during discussions at Maryland Municipal League, other cities have this issue, but it just did not rise to the level of a priority. So, I want you guys to, to think about this, put it on your radar. And I know the comptroller's office may not like it, but it is a big issue for us that we need to get resolved. And then, finally, the, the concept is to have the state create a municipal innovation fund. Now, right now, you know, there, there are all these little buckets of money at the state level. There's money in the Department of Transportation for things, there's money in the Department of Environment, maybe for sustainability. Our proposal is to take this money, to put it into one bucket, and let municipalities apply to this new formed entity, to try new pilot projects, rather than having to, you know, go through all of, jump through all the hoops to, you know, whether it's some type of new transportation idea, whether or not it's trying to make the, a new apartment building, increasing their energy efficiency. Municipalities have all these different ideas, that they want to do different things. So, it, it would be much easier if there was one point of contact for the solicitation of funding through the state for these new ideas. And that's it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the briefing and the update. I said a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
I wanted to take, monopolize the time, but for, so you, you know that the situation we're facing on the state level with respect to the budget?
Yes.
Eight hundred million dollars shortfall?
Yes.
Shortfall, and then also one billion in the next four years. So, given that we're going to have to reprioritize in terms of services and budget and bond, if you were to prioritize, and you've got, I see two potential bond bills here. One is for the library, and then one is for the aquatic.
Right.
Centers, since we're talking about some structural improvements, some like brick and mortar stuff. If you all were to prioritize one for this next upcoming session, which would it be? Which of those two priorities would you say is, is the number one on the list?
Delegate Smith, thank you for that question, but I will pass that on to Madam Mayor.
Oh.
I'll, I'll say that Delegate Hickson has more experience. This is, she's, this is her wheelhouse too, so I'll just, but I, just to.
I do not want to speak.
Well, I, yes, and I, my colleagues can, we can open it up now for a conversation. My colleagues can speak to it as well. I think in terms of where we are in the process, as you'll see in your packets, we have some of the concepts that we have been working with for the library. The library project is much more further along. Regarding the aquatic center, we are just at the beginning of that process, and our colleague from Washington Aventis Hospital was here earlier, and that is really building, we're at the stage of building a partnership with the hospital, Washington Aventis University, Montgomery College, and the city, which is really remarkable. It's, I think, the first time in our history of our city that all these institutions have come together. And so, we're just starting those conversations. So, I would say the one that is much closer to being realized is the library right now.
Okay. I would, I would agree. You know, I think we, and you, as our delegates, and thank you for being here, we love to tout the socio-economic and racial diversity of this city.
for being here, we love to tout the socio-economic and racial diversity of this city. This meeting does not usually represent that, but the library does. And on a daily basis, if you come down to the library, you get a real broad section of our community. It's the centerpiece of our community. It's where children come together. Frankly, it's a form of childcare for some family members who don't have the ability to provide care. The Recreation Department does activities there. And I think, you know, this city is growing in many respects, especially with young families and young people. And I would, I believe that aside from the fact that, you know, these diverse parts, parties coming together within our community center, the library is a centerpiece, and also, you know, updates on ADA issues, which I know the city manager is shaking her head to back there, are very important. And I think the mayor's point is well-taken. We're farther along in that process. The aquatic center is a good thing, and it's a good sort of pie-in-the-sky thing. But, you know, we'll keep the piney branch pulled while we're at it, too. So, but thank you.
I can follow up with a quick question on the library also. Do you have a price tag on this? And, you know, it says, I just, I'm being legalistic about the way your request is worded. It says, "Bond bill is requested to provide some of the funding." So I'm gathering there's a financing model that you're contemplating.
Yes, and we're putting together those materials now. So you will receive them soon. Yes.
Just one other thing. I agree that both projects are great. The library is further along. The one other thing I wanted to mention, when the mayor gave that outline of our city, and I'm not upset that she didn't mention this, but one additional thing is eight thousand of our seventeen thousand people speak a language other than English at home. And that's another reason, and Councilmember Koreshi sort of alluded to this, the library has programs in a lot of different languages. And what I find is if you, it's fairly close to where I live, and you go in there at certain times of the day, in the morning, it's mobbed with kids and very young, some with their childcare, the people in charge of them for childcare. And then later, it's older kids. And then at certain times, the senior citizens. Then throughout, with different languages, too. So I just think it's an amazing place in that sense and really central to a lot of the things that we do and aspire to. So I really would like to see that funded sooner.
I mean, these are not mutually exclusive things.
Right.
Just with respect to the situation, it wants to be priority for the next session. Delegate Hickson certainly knows that.
Actually, the library has really become the community center of, you know, in a concept, in the old concept of what, how we structured things. So that where things are done, people come together and everybody's comfortable, and things get done. And it's, and you guys have epitomized that. But just a quick analysis of all the things we heard tonight, of all the people who testified, that kind of stuff. I'm trying to speak for Will and David. It's a, we're back home, aren't we? All of you have great ideas. And believe me, philosophically, we're all on your side. But you're looking at three of the probably three most liberal people in the Maryland General Assembly there. So when we come up with these ideas, the thing that we need from you are this, these things that we can go forward with. We put them in. I've been in a long time. And I put in the right-to-die bill when I first went in, in nineteen seventy-six. And it passed somewhere in the nineteen hundreds, okay? So you're talking about twenty years of getting a piece of legislation that's socially acceptable by the people and socially. It takes a long time. And we have to get people like David and Will with me that they can, and they're doing a great job down there, great innovative ideas. But they all basically come from you. I mean, Tacoma Park, when we mentioned that, that we represent that down in Annapolis, they all said, "Oh, my God, how can you handle all those ideas?" We said, "Well, we don't have to stay up night thinking of bills, guys. Our constituents do it for us, and we're the bridge between them and you." And can't thank you enough. But you, the best thing you've always done over the years you've been here, you're on the forefront. You've set up these ideas and things, social programs, things that start in on the ground, and you've set up programs where they work. And so you can see samples of what you've done and how it actually happened. You've been an educational unit for the state of Maryland, and we thank you for that very much. We're very honored to be able to represent you down there.
Thank you. Yes.
Sorry, one more question.
Must be that seat. No, okay.
Yikes. Just with respect to the freestanding medical facility, I was talking to, I think I was talking to Alice earlier today about, obviously Tacoma Park has different, just logistical challenges with respect to this type of facility than somewhere in western Maryland or the eastern shore. What is, how is Adventist Hospital feeling about this? What's the relationship there? What's their willingness? And just like, real talk, what's, how does that relationship developing? And where are we with that?
I think that they would contemplate a freestanding emergency room. Their biggest issue comes down, does it pencil out? Is this, is this going to be a money loser for them? Because currently, they're spending three hundred and fifty, three hundred and twenty-five million dollars in a new hospital.
Yeah.
Right? So that's the biggest issue for them. Can it work financially? And then if it does, I don't think they'd have any problem.
And it's more than just, I don't think, because they have specifically said.
If the money's not right.
They are interested in doing it if they can make the model work.
Yes.
So we will have to think of some innovative solutions to make that model work.
And I think it's also thinking, what we've been doing with our relationship with the hospital is asking to be thinking holistically about the campus, what is left here in Tacoma Park. And so I think, you know, freestanding emergency room hopefully is part of that mix.
At a request, I, from people in Tacoma Park, I met with Ike Leggett on the aquatic operation, can I think? And he is, he is not committed to anything. It is not off the table. He's very, very considerate of your concerns and the need down here. I was pleasantly surprised and pleased there was no commitment to doing something else as I worked with your offices and that kind of thing. So I think you'll certainly get a fair shot from Ike Leggett on making sure the aquatic center is down here. If there are outside pressures that we have not heard about, that did not come up in the conversation. Okay?
Good.
Thank you for having that conversation. So I don't know, we can spend another few minutes maybe on questions or reactions to the priorities. And then I would also like to give our delegation an opportunity to talk to us, tell us what you think this upcoming session is going to be, and then if there's anything we can do for you all. So I don't know if my councilmembers or if the delegation has any more questions regarding our priorities.
Oh, can I talk about, respond to the? Yeah, so I found a lot of the testimony today from the residents interesting. And there's actually quite a bit of work underway on some of these items. So let me just, I'm going to try and bang through very quickly some of this, so I won't give it too much detail. But on the trust act, so this whole issue of the local police being conscripted into immigration enforcement agents was an issue long before Donald Trump got into office. And, you know, we saw Massachusetts, the governor said, "We're just not going to deal with this." And the District of Columbia did the same thing. And some of us have been asking the Democrats to do that in Maryland for quite some time, including at the county level. And so this is nothing new. The difference now, though, is that, you know, now that it is Donald Trump who's putting his face on these policies, I actually think we might see a greater willingness from the powers that be to stand up against this. And we're already seeing little hints of this, where you have things like the Baltimore County Executive, and, you know, that's an ex-urban kind of purple county coming out and proactively saying, "We are not going to take enforcement actions against our, the college students that are here." And I've spoken to students at Montgomery College about this, and they are scared. So that's a very real issue. So I anticipate that's, that's going to be, we might actually see a better sentiment from our side on this. But as to the trust act, that's going to take some work in Annapolis. On the issue of pesticide companies suing the county's new law restricting some of their use, I think, you know, we'll wait and see what happens with the lawsuit, maybe. But, you know, I would think that the county delegation would be supportive of a clarification to state law. So I'm hopeful on that. This bigger issue on the budget, which Will started talking about, just so everybody is clear, we are in about a billion-dollar budget hole in the state right now. The governor has used that as a justification for cuts. I mean, you know, no money, so there's going to be cuts. I don't see in the short term a new revenue source or some major shift in the economy that's going to change that picture. And so what we really are talking about is prioritizing our limited funds. I would agree with those here who suggest we focus them on safety net spending. But the next problem is going to be that for the last few years, we've also had folks down in Annapolis who want to enact additional tax cuts. And, you know, some of them are up to two hundred million dollars a year. That's going to come off something on the service and spending side of it. So that's something to keep an eye on. And the last thing I'll leave with is that, you know, folks had asked what they could do on the environment. You know, first up, we have a veto override to handle on the issue of increasing Maryland's renewables portfolio. The other thing I would flag is that fracking is going to be a major issue. And the debate right now is going to be whether to have a permanent ban or whether to take our current moratorium and just extend it for a few more years. And sorry, one last one, sick leave is a big item on the agenda. And the debate there, it looks like it's moving. The debate is going to be whether Montgomery County's sick leave law, which is quite strong, is going to be preempted in favor of a broad statewide standard that is not as strong. So that's, that's all I got.
Thank you. All right. My colleagues, anyone?
Yeah, let me just say my, you know, peep-up here, I've had a chance to talk about anything. Now, can you hear me?
There you go.
Isn't it wonderful what these things can do? I'm still amazed. The, the, the proposal of what to do with the Washington Adventist Hospital is something that is of great concern to a very broad range of interests in the city. And I say that because there's an awful lot of, there's a big, long wish list here. And we know that this is a long, a long wish. And we know we're dealing with a lot of unknowns with, at the federal level and even with our, with our governor Hogan. But, but the city has, is losing its major employer with the loss of the hospital moving. And we understand that it needs to, this, this move is necessary for the, for the health of the hospital. It isn't going to do the city any good to have the hospital here when it's failing. And so this is a good thing overall, but it's taking away over a thousand jobs. And that's a punch in, in the stomach. And, and so we're kind of see that while we're losing something, there's also a fabulous opportunity. Because this is an interesting, was it, how many acres campus? Some of the buildings are going to be available, not all of them, because the hospital is going to be maintaining a number of functions. The aquatic center is just one idea of how this area, how this campus can be kept up to use. The hospital, and we meet with the president and the executive director of the, of the hospital once a month, and have for the last three or four years as we've gone through this whole transitional process. They're very excited about, about it. And they genuinely, and first, we had to get the trust issue worked out between the hospital and us. But we genuinely realize, know that we both have each other's interests at heart as well as our own interests. I think there's a tremendous amount of potential there. It's not all going to be realized real quickly because it's going to take another two to two and a half years for the hospital to be completed. I just learned a few minutes ago that they're starting to pour the foundation up there. So we have, we have a little bit of time, but, but in a way, in a second way of looking at it, we don't really have much time at all if we want to start planning so that things, things can happen. And I, and I see it as a huge economic, as a huge component of our economic development effort that, you know, not just on New Hampshire Avenue, not just at the crossroads, but also at the campus itself. Thank you.
I would like to follow on with what Councilmember Schultz talked about. And it was a great buildup to the other big issue, which is economic development along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. As Councilmember Schultz said, there is a, of course, an ongoing need for economic development, but it's, but it addresses your issues, too, because of thriving business district along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor would increase tax revenues and help to solve some of the problems that you have at the state level. So I like to emphasize the need. It's nice to think about the renovation of the library, and I certainly support that. And, and aquatic center, again, I strongly support that. But when we're thinking about where does all this money come from? It's from our thriving businesses. And so I would like to see what we could do to really get some activity in that area in economic development.
And I'd just like to point out in your packets, last year, we were fortunate enough to get language in the state budget to get a report regarding New Hampshire Avenue and work that could be done there. And we, you have the full report in there, but just one of the highlights is that it could increase state property tax revenue from the current by two points, sixty-seven million annually, and county revenue by two-point-four million, up to, yeah, by two-point-four million. And the full reports in there regarding what work would have to be done by state highway to help improve the area. But it also shows the income that could be generated from there.
And a couple of years ago, we did complete a vision for the New Hampshire Avenue corridor as a very first baby step for doing that. And I think that is in your packet, too.
Well, as, as you all know, and we don't have to explain this to you, but with the budget in the state of Maryland, is that the governor brings down the budget, and we have nothing to say about it. We can cut it, but we can't add to it. That's the biggest flaw, in my opinion, in the Maryland state government. I hate to admit that we have flaws. And so that's the kind of obstacles you're getting, and particularly when you're talking transportation money, that the things that we know were needed, and that we represent Montgomery County and your area, the volume here alone speaks to something beyond any place else in the state that faces nothing like we do. And so it's a hard fight down there to, you know, they, they, they see us the richest group in the, in the state. So, guys, take care of your own problems. Well, if it were only our problems, that'd be fine. But people are driving through to other counties from, who have jobs in DC, everywhere else. We see it as a state impact. But I deal with the transportation funding and that kind of operation. We really do try to get our share, but it's a fight, guys, for us. It's really, because we have to, you know, certainly share with the rest of the state. We're Maryland legislators. We're not county council. We represent the whole of the state of Maryland. But we really want our section, I think, Montgomery County is the engine for the state. It's where the money is made, where the taxes are coming from. And I think that us asking for money is, we don't have to apologize for that. We don't. But I mean, when, when we go into these meetings, they're just saying, "You guys got it all." I said, "Even if we do, it's wearing out. So you're going to have to help us." It's really...
Mayor, if I could just follow up on that. I, you know, we think you're gods that you can provide all for that we need, right? That you can, you can get us all the money that we need and take care of all of our projects. But realistically, we also, rather than just asking you for things, we're asking you tonight also for guidance. So if you have suggestions on...
I wasn't complaining.
No, no, I'm not saying you were. But I, but if you have any advice on, you know, how, where we can turn and how we should be working these issues in the broader sense, we appreciate that, too.
Well, I, you know, maybe more meetings. You know, maybe you should be with us in Annapolis when we're in, we're in the ninety days, and it's pretty intense. And it all happens very quickly. Everything we do has to be done in a ninety-day period. But make sure your input is there and be with us, okay? So, and, because we're there, and the decision is made with the information that we have. And if we didn't get it all, then shame on us. But, you know, we do have to find out what you need and how you feel.
Delegate Smith and then Councilmember McCovey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And with respect to that, just on all in those same lines of guidance, you know, getting the budget language inserted is a feat in and of itself in the report. Obviously, the numbers come back, and they're, they're great. But I wanted to know what level of coordination happened with Prince George's and Prince, and the district? the district? How much skin do they have in the game? And is there something we can be doing to collaborate with them moving forward to push this? Because I'd like to see, you know, them have a little bit of skin in the game and some oomph behind this as well. And I wanted to know if they're invested in this process as much as we are.
Yes. Well, I can tell you that in order to get the language in the budget last year, we worked closely with mayors in Prince George's County. So, and they were very excited about getting this in the budget as well. We are meeting with the Prince George's County Councilwoman, Dani Taveras, frequently. And actually, just last week, the city manager and myself had a meeting with the Prince George's County Executive to give him some of the same materials that we're giving you this evening to provide him with the report, to make sure he has it. So I think the relationship, again, the theme that we are really working towards is greater partnerships. And we're building that in Prince George's County. I will say I am disappointed with not being able to do as much with the district, but hope that we will continue working on that.
Without stepping on toes, obviously, whatever we can do to help with that.
Great. So Councilmember McCollum?
Oh, just a brief thing. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree very much with a number of the comments that people in the public comment period today made about working to assist lower-income people. And we love to see that, in particular, in affordable housing. We're trying to get there ourselves on that. And also on small business, which is the angle with the inventory tax that I'm interested in. And just being sympathetic to what you were talking about, in particular for the chair, about not having enough money, is possible that if we can get to the bottom of the inventory tax, that could even generate more funds coming in. Because that could be one area that's being under-reported. And so that could help you, and then we could find a way to provide some relief here. So I just mentioned that as we're not just asking for money, but we're also looking for ways that you might be able to get some more.
We accept all the help we get.
We don't know. We don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah. I just sort of want to make sure, since we've been talking about economic development, we've been talking about the library, we've been talking about Aquatic Center. And I don't want those of you who spoke tonight to feel like, oh, well, all we're interested in up here on the city council is the bricks and mortar kind of gaudy things that cost a zillion dollars and stuff like that. Because we're, all of us want, I certainly want to be sensitive to the comments that have been made here about the need for us to focus on the very, much, much less glamorous, much less obvious issues that have been raised here about the affordable housing, helping the developmentally disabled, you know, the issues related to people's concerns about health care and health insurance and the issues about, you know, the sanctuary and protecting the immigrants. A lot of those aren't going to cost money. They are stuff that is going to just require legislative coordination between you guys and the legislature and many of the municipalities in the city. I mean, we're a prominent municipality, of course, that tends to kind of hit the bell first on some of these, on some of these things. But I think one of the roles that our delegation can do is to help us coordinate with other municipalities and not only just in the immediate region, but elsewhere on these issues so that, because we're all really, all these social issues are going to be such a huge challenge, and they're very serious. They don't have the cachet of, you know, a $6 million library or a billion-dollar Aquatic Center or whatever it's going to cost. We don't know, but you know.
All right. You're done.
I hope it's not a billion dollars.
Wonderful. So I think, in the time we have left, I'd like to welcome our delegates to say anything about the upcoming session, if there are things that you need from all of us here in Tacoma Park.
Well, certainly, I would like to continue the work together, you know, just when, things happen very fast down there for us, really, it's very quick. But if you need us at any time, you know, be sure to, let us know what's going on here. Because so we're not always on top of it in that 90 days. We might be the last ones to hear instead of the first when we should have. So I think communications is a big piece of it, and we'd like to be part of what we can do. Because it happens so fast if we know what you need and we could put it in. But if we have to wait a week, even, which is a long period of time out of that 90 days, if we didn't have the information, it's a resource. We're saying that if you keep us informed and moving along with it, that I'll be better for both of us, of both groups. We can do more for you by knowing what you really need and where your priorities are. And not that you don't know it now, but we just all should keep sort of an eye on it because things happen around us that, you know, and you wonder why you didn't hear that, you know, and it just really, but working together, it's been a great team all the years. You're our star in Tacoma Park as our city and that kind of thing. And at the state level, they take very, very pride in pointing out that Montgomery County knows what it's doing when it comes to cities, okay?
Great. Delegate Smith? Moon, sorry?
Sure. I'll leave it fairly brief since I talked a little bit about the issues. And that's just to say, let me double down on what Delegate Hickson is saying. And note that, you know, while I was sitting there out in the reception, I had listened to a few folks' ideas about things that are very clear, bills that could be introduced or might need to be introduced. Our drafting deadline is somewhere in January, I want to say. But, you know, I've already got a bunch of them drafted up, and I know that's probably true for a lot of my colleagues. So if you do have ideas, some of these things can be turned into legislation, but better to start now, you know, well before the start of the new year if we want to do that. And the other part of it too is, it's clear by listening to the testimony that you guys have a lot of passion on bills that I know are coming up in the assembly and other bills that may not come up, but we want to get out for floor votes that people might feel are controversial or things like that. And so it would be nice to connect a little bit more with the city officials, but also with each of you individually. So I will just throw my email address out there. It's david@davidmoon.us. And so let's stay in touch, definitely.
Thank you.
And Will and I will use David's email.
He's got it with computers anyway. No, I'll just echo what Delegate Hickson and Delegate Moon have said already is that I think this is a great idea. So thank you for doing this, and thank you all for coming to the testimony. A lot of what Delegate Moon just said is true, that we really want to have more direct communication with you because a lot of the ideas that you've brought before us are bills already or are good ideas for bills. And it would be great to have some of you come up to Annapolis, or we can coordinate more closely to have some of this stuff come to fruition. But also, with respect to the council, you know, maybe, you know, I like this, the priorities briefing, but also it'd be a good opportunity for us to brief you on what we're thinking about and do a little bit of the opposite way and say, look, here's what's on our legislative agenda. What do you all think that we should be thinking about, that we're not thinking about? So maybe next year, we do something like that, and there's more of a give and take on that. I think that'd be a great idea. But with respect to what Delegate Hickson said, look, it's, the communication is important because everything from Montgomery College development, you know, to bond bills, to the corridor investments, so all of this stuff takes a greater level of coordination. And we all get along, and we're all friends here. So it's a great, a great opportunity for us to just be more collaborative and have a direct, more direct line of communication. So thank you for hosting this, and maybe next year, we can give you a little bit of information about what we're thinking about.
Any other last words or thoughts? All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Good. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Cool. Great. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Cool. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Well, with that, I think we'll close up tonight, and thank you so much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
businesses, seniors, youth. An endless list of people, departments, events, challenges, goals. Everything that encompasses a municipality. Now you can find them all in the Municipal Broadcast Network. Tacoma Park, Rockville, Kensington, and 15 other municipalities share the digital channels Comcast 997 and RCN 1057. The Municipal Broadcast Network: Life in Your Community.
Just to feel the way I do with you. To find those eyes that I can dive into. Brand new. Brand new. Just to feel the way I do with you. To find those eyes that I can dive into. Brand new. Brand new. Brand new. Brand new. Yeah, 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 yeah. I want to. I want to thank you for letting me be myself again. I want to thank you for letting me be myself again. I want to.
Well, I'm gonna get up in the morning. I believe I'll dust my broom. Well, I'm gonna get up in the morning. I believe I'll dust my broom. I believe I'll just my room. The man you been loving, girlfriend, he can give my room. Well, I'm gonna write a letter. Telephone every time I know. Well, I'm gonna write a letter. Telephone every time I know. If she ain't in West Helena, she must be in East Monroe, I know. Well, I don't want no woman. Won't sit at downtown Manchester. I don't want no woman. Won't sit at downtown Manchester. She's a no-good, don't it? They shouldn't allow her on the street. Well, I'm gonna write a letter. Telephone every time I know. I'm gonna write a letter. Telephone every time I know. If she ain't in East Helena, she must be in West Monroe, I know. Well, I believe. You know, my baby's got a black hat bone. You know, I believe. My baby's got a black hat bone. She can't mistreat me here, babe. But you know, she can when I can hold.
Well, I know I should not leave. That girl has caught me by the collar. And oh, what a kiss to me. It's departure with a promise. My fellow passengers are discontent. The FAA has much to say. It's too much baggage, anyway. Pull me out of line and have your way with me and throw me back again. I am no danger after all. It's what you get for looking out of place and seeming well held. Oh, so excited before dawn. If I look like something other than I am, I can't bitch about delays. But I know I should not leave. That girl has caught me with her Genesee choir, but I know where we're going. What one can mean. It's gonna be a long, hard departure. A harder landing, still the pilot has apologies. I can't hear him for the racing of my heart. They ditched me on the plane for speaking. I had tried to think, I must have muttered something about God. They who could blame me now. As a light exploderant, it's what you get for flying late for dawn. And if I look like something other than I am, I can't bitch about delays. Day is coming once again, and people sit and rage. Haven't cared in years for what they think. Fingers fly upon the clock, says they try and stretch the time with surgery and perjury and God. I'm so sorry, sweetness, but I booked this year's go, and I'm leaving in the morning for my fight. I got too much on my mind, and now there's someone on my lips. You must be crazy to be ready for my life. Hey, hey, I hate to be late. Well, I know I need to leave. 'Cause something caught me by the conscience. It's dead or false, and I know where I'm going. Christmas won't find Texas, I'm back home, I hear it's snowing. Give me back the trains, those DCs take their toll on me. I swear to you that I won't make a fuss. Clanging beasts are stealing concrete. Did you feel the want of it for me? Yeah, I know you felt the heat. If I seem like something other than I am, won't you please excuse the dust and pardon all my mess? These trains, they aren't like planes. They won't let me board regardless of the fireworks exploding in my chest. Well, hold me in the station, I'm no danger after all. Yeah, kiss me like it's snowing, and they won't let us take off from talking. Trusting slow and sweet.
I'm gonna lay down my sword and shield. Down by the riverside, down by... Way down. I'm gonna lay down my sword and shield. Down by the riverside. Ain't gonna study war no more. I ain't gonna study war no more. Ain't gonna study war no more. I ain't gonna study war no more. I ain't gonna study. Ain't gonna study war no more. I ain't gonna study war no more. I ain't gonna study war no more.
There is no blue left in your eyes. The space between us shrank like your iris. When I was once miraculous. Held so high, I was afraid. All the sharp things and I lost my faith. Broke what I gave. There is no blue left in your eyes. I lost it all. And now they will not rise to meet mine. I could say sorry a thousand times. Still leave you unsatisfied, still leave you dry. Still leave me crying. There is no blue there in his eyes. Lovely man though he is. I tried so hard not to compare. Still how strange to search my lover's face and fail to find you there. Still how strange to search my lover's face and fail to find you there.
Government, law enforcement, public works, schools, transportation, nonprofits, neighborhood organizations, businesses, seniors, youth. An endless list of people, departments, events, challenges, goals. Everything that encompasses a municipality. Now you can find them all in the Municipal Broadcast Network. Tacoma Park, Rockville, Kensington, and 15 other municipalities share the digital channels Comcast 997 and RCN 1057. The Municipal Broadcast Network: Life in Your Community. Government, law enforcement, public works, schools, transportation, nonprofits, neighborhood organizations, businesses, seniors, youth. An endless list of people, departments, events, challenges, goals. Everything that encompasses a municipality. Now you can find them all in the Municipal Broadcast Network. Tacoma Park, Rockville, Kensington, and 15 other municipalities share the digital channels Comcast 997 and RCN 1057. Tacoma Park, Rockville, Kensington, and fifteen other municipalities share the digital channels Comcast 997 and RCN 1057. The Municipal Broadcast Network: Life in Your Community.
Yesterday, woke up and the first thing that I saw was my future in still life. Alarm clock on the table, no pictures on the wall, charcoal suit intact. With nobody inside like the occupant died, just waiting there for me. It's as plain as it can be, made up my mind. Now is the time, this is the place to make my escape, to run to the light and open my eyes. I've waited so long, I'm already gone. I woke up this morning, I was hanging on a dream, bathed in golden light. The easel was before me, the canvas was clean, everything felt right. The brush in my hand seemed to understand, the colors came from me, like I suddenly could see. Made up my mind, now is the time, this is the place to make my escape, to run to the light and open my eyes. I've waited so long, I'm already gone. To a world of corn and space, I am painting my own face. And I never looked so good, knew I could, I made up my mind. Now is the time, this is the place to make my escape, to run to the light and open my eyes. I've waited so long, I'm already gone. Have we ever been closer? Our hearts beating in time. I'll be your salvation, 'cause baby you're sure I'm bad. If I'm cold, fall down on my knees, I will testify. You were my sacred ground, you were my holy water. Baby, just let me drown, wash over me. I see the heavens part, and I feel your heart when you touch me. I hear the angels say how sweet love can be. How did you find me? Why did it take so long? Guess someone up there finally got tired of my sad, sad song. And I believe you were sent to me. I will testify, you were my sacred ground, you were my holy water. Baby, just let me drown, wash over me. I see the heavens part, and I feel your heart when you touch me. I hear the angels say how sweet love can be. Some take it on faith, some are afraid of their own shadows. They wait for a sign, a star that won't shine, but baby I know. You were my sacred ground, you were my holy water. Baby, just let me drown, wash over me. I see the heavens part, and I feel your heart when you touch me. I hear the angels say how sweet love can be. I hear the angels say how sweet love can be. Standing on that sacred ground. I went to the dance hit clinical, high time to try something new. Learned a country dance in a shoddy, what the hell, a square dancer too. First it seemed kinda corny, not enough rhythm and blues. Then came time for the last dance, I was waltzing with you. I was no Arthur Murray, no doubt I tread on a toe or two. But you're flirting as we sashay, warm this clumsy heart right through. Now when my dark side sucks me bone dry and I lose all hope in what's true. Nothing can refill my well like waltzing with you. When we both give weight, we soar so wild and free. When we both give weight, it's how our life was meant to be. I've whirled like a dervish in Persia, tango till dawn in Lima, Peru. Danced on tabletops like zorba.
Government, Law Enforcement, Public Works, Schools, Transportation, Nonprofits, Neighborhood Organizations, Businesses, Seniors, Youth. An endless list of people, Departments, Events, Challenges, Goals. Everything that encompasses a municipality. Now you can find them all in the Municipal Broadcast Network. Tacoma Park, Rockville, Kensington, and fifteen other municipalities share the digital channels Comcast 997 and RCN 1057. The Municipal Broadcast Network: Life in Your Community.
Red and ginger soft shoe, branch trip early dancers from Cairo. And I call the line to Timbuktu. Nothing ever top the thrill of waltzing with you. Nothing ever can top the thrill of waltzing with you.
I think we proved it, like a jar sounds better in the dark, like our faces they are floating souls projected. I think we think of better in the dark and, oh no, gotta go smoking, I'm spoiled by your fingers. Let me spill you with mine, I'll be so kind. Fingers pressing against the tension of attention. Shame to let this one go all to waste, let the have-nots have too soon. Let my fingers do all the walking, yeah, rip that off, give me time, and then I'll be ripping off you. This isn't all that I am thinking, I test if my body speaks first, fourth under hind brainness, the loudest of all my parts. Undercover of my supper, won't get it loud and suck it down, I've come to you for holding, please let me, please let me in. And I'd write love songs like, 'cause you know I'd cry, but I compare you to a summer's day, but aren't cliches. But I hold you up in darkness, I light the night with all your flame. If you let me, I'm gonna take everything that I can. Serenade this blank grid wall again, the edge is blurring, the morning sun is here, the morning sun is here, it's burning. Time for me to be shining home again, I'm thinking about the time that you used to me in spite of me. Well, all I can say is at least it's me, and, oh, you not know the thoughts that are churning. But I'm in the head that I'm spreading my mouth so, so wide, unlike a kiss and tell, but what the hell. I simply kiss and stand and sing. And I'd write love songs like, 'cause you know I swear I would, but I'm so frightened every day. I'm never done running from everything you are, burning wings up from my ribs, I give you everything that you need. My third blue gas heat, I'll keep the lights and I'll watch you, we're shining. I keep you shining, oh, 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 I keep you shining, oh, 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 I keep you shining, oh, oh, oh. Yeah, I keep you shining, shining, yeah. Yeah, I keep you shining, shining, yeah.